Okay, we'll do, Christina, do the roll call, please.
Fish, Johnson, Jorgensen, Cole, Lawrence, Steen, Mayor Buck.
Here. Okay, we have, Quorum will look at the approval of the agenda for, this is our changeover meeting. And so we'll have actually two different agendas today, or tonight. And we'll get started with the first one, with the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion second to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. And we have approval of the minutes from the April 11 and April 15 meetings. I'll look for a motion on that. Motion a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Both same sign. And motion carries. And we have approval of the claims on pages fifteen through seventeen. Motion second to approve the claims. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. Old business, we have the second reading of ordinance seven oh two, the rezone of tracks one through eight on River Park Edition. That's the Van Buskirk property out on the east side. I'll look for discussion or a motion. Motion a second to approve the second reading of ordinance seven oh two. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. At this time, I would like to do a proclamation. We have a couple of citizens here in Brandon that have donated tons and tons of time and hours over the past twenty years that have decided to step aside now. And so I thought it would be appropriate for us to have this proclamation. So this is proclamation twenty four oh five. Whereas Chuck Parsons and Tim Jorgensen were appointed to the Brandon Planning and Zoning Commission in nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and seven, respectively, serving as either a board member or chairperson. And whereas Chuck Parsons served three years on the Brandon City Council, and Tim Jorgensen served five years on the Brandon City Council. And whereas during their, his time on the city council, Tim Jorgensen was, has served as the city council liaison for the street department and for the city council representative on the Brandon revolving loan fund. And whereas during his time on the city council, Chuck Parsons served as the city council liaison for the golf course. And whereas Chuck Parsons and Tim Jorgensen have both served on the board of directors of the Brandon Development Foundation. Therefore, I, Harry Buck, Mayor of the City of Brandon, South Dakota, do proclaim May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four as Chuck Parsons and Tim Jorgensen Day in the City of Brandon in recognition for their dedication and service to the citizens of Brandon. I'm really, really do want to thank you guys. You put in so much time. And I know it goes back, and I know there's things that you've been on boards that I didn't mention. So anyway, come on up, I've got a couple plaques here for you. Okay. Alrighty. Okay, then we will move on. And actually, that's all we need for, we'll need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion a second to adjourn with the current council. All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Thanks, Tim. Okay, now we're gonna change over. Go straight home now. Okay, we'll call, we'll call, we'll call the next meeting of Brandon City Council order. And the first order of business is oath of office for Randy Marso and Bruce Johnson. And I'd ask Christine at the. Welcome, Randy. And Bruce. Okay, we'll move on. Roll call.
Fish, Johnson, Cole, Lawrence, Marso, Steen, Mayor Buck.
Here. And we'll look for approval of the agenda or any additions or corrections. Motion a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. We now have an opportunity to elect the council president and the council vice president. And currently, we have. And I'll look for anybody else that wants to nominate somebody else.
For Councilor Fish as president and vice president to be Cole.
Motion a second for President Fish and Vice President Cole. All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Carries. We've got the consent calendar. On, and for draw, for seating, I think we'll just stay with the same. Okay, consent calendar then, and we've got Platts one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight for River Park Edition. Platt nine B and Block Five, Original Town of Brandon. We've got a plat of Lot Four, Block Three, Encore Park, and request for a tax abatement. Do we do these one at a time? Do it all at once. Any discussion on any of these? And everything is due pass by planning and zoning? Okay, I'll look for a motion. Motion a second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. Okay, it's time for visitors and timed items. This is an opportunity for anybody that would like to address the chamber or the council on any particular item, whether it's on the agenda or not on the agenda. If you would like to talk to the, the council, step up, otherwise we'll just move on. Stan? We ask that you give us your name and your address, and we limit it to five minutes.
Stan Shoneman, five fifteen South Dakota Avenue, Brandon. This is in regards to a letter I received Saturday. And. We started a new project, commercial project in Hague Edition. And as that first sentence says, that we did not call for an inspection on the sewer. Which is a false statement. And that's why I'm here with that today. There's a second page that documents when inspections were called, and the city inspector came, did the inspection, and said it was fine, covered it up. Second day comes, we were told to dig it up by the upper departments. And we refused to do that because it was done by a certified installer. Postma did the work. He's a licensed contractor for the state of South Dakota. He's licensed in Sioux Falls. He's certified to self-inspect in Sioux Falls and does continuous add on what he does for a living. This really made me upset from receiving this letter from Brandon. I've been building in Brandon for fifty years. And then I received this. It's bothering me to, just my respect for the city has really changed. Because it's gonna hurt my reputation saying something that we did not do. And if the inspector is not certified to do inspections, I don't know why he's on the payroll. There's something that has to be changed. So what I'm after today is to retract the letter and get confirmation from the city in writing that this letter never existed. Because we did everything that's asked of the city. I realize you can't do nothing at this time, but you'll have to look into it. And I hope you do. Welcome Bruce, welcome Randy.
Anybody else want to address the council?
Brian Postma, four oh eight North Willow Creek Avenue, Sioux Falls. I own the excavating business that did this, worked on this project. We had an inspector to come, we called him, he came, inspected it, said it was okay to cover it up. We covered it up, it was raining and stuff, it was in sand. The next day, one of his bosses showed up and came up there, point blank, said, "Dig it up, we gotta inspect this." In regards of the guy that inspected it beforehand, he said it was alright, we had okay to cover it up, and we proceeded doing it. There was no reason to dig it up the next day. We went by the civil engineering on the building, what needed to be done. We did wrap it in plastic, because it was ductile iron, and it needs to be wrapped in plastic, otherwise it corrodes and stuff, and it'll blow off, and it'll corrode in two, three years. That was the dilemma that they had. We did everything we were supposed to do. We have an issue of a four-hour call for when we call in to come get inspected. The City of Brandon is eighty percent sand. Four hours, it takes two hours to do the job. We're waiting four hours for a guy to show up, you got all these utilities and stuff, and you're digging next to the street, cars are driving by, it just vibrates the sand and stuff, there's curb and gutter there, everything could fall in. You could put a trench box in there, but you can't hold the utilities up next to the curb and gutter or whatnot. How do you think? It shouldn't be self-inspecting, but at least give two-hour notice to show up at the time to come inspect this stuff, because four hours, it's two hours to do the job, we're waiting next to two hours, and there's five guys sitting there waiting to have some guy show up. Granted, I know the guys are busy in town and stuff here, but I'm sure if we give a two-hour leeway, they could show up there. Some of the stuff has to be filled back in to hold up a curb stop or whatnot, so it don't fall down, so it doesn't blow off, and the water doesn't, you know, wreck more than what has to be done there and stuff, so, I know you can't decide that either tonight, but it used to be self-inspecting in Brandon. Now it's not, got a four-hour deal there, so. And we were also told that on this deal, that we would lose our license in Brandon here, which we do not have license in Brandon to do any excavating work. There's no such thing for our contract, for us contractors. And we were also told, if we didn't comply to this, that we were, we don't care, we would no longer do work in Brandon by other people. So, we do the best we can. What needs to be done, what would need to be done to the civil part of it and everything else, and they, they drew it up, we went by it. And that's what it was, so. I'd like the letter revoked on my behalf, too. Thank you.
Anyone else for visitors and timed items? Okay, saying done, we'll move on. We have public hearing, and I'm gonna ask Brian to maybe kind of update us on, on these as we go along. The first reading of ordinance seven oh three.
Seven, seven oh three will abolish bid district number one, which was established to pay for the convention center addition at the Holiday Inn Express in two thousand and five. The bid district was implemented, it was two dollar a night room charge to help defray the debt service on that bond, that, that bond has been paid. So the bid district can.
I'll look for a motion. Motion second to approve the first reading of ordinance seven oh three. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. And next we have first reading of ordinance seven oh four, the rezone of Lot A in the Heartland Edition.
So seven oh four rezones Van Buskirk Park, Stoneridge Park, and McCarty Parks from their current zoning to the institutional district. We did have some public comments prior to the planning and zoning meeting. I got a subsequent email from the person that lived out in the bluff saying that their concerns were alleviated at that meeting. Planning and zoning is recommended to do pass on all three, on seven oh four.
Motion second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. First reading of ordinance seven oh five.
Seven oh five stems from chapter fifteen fifteen three A eight as an exception to one driveway per lot generally in the zoning code. And our one lot is allowed one access point in town, we have lots that are corner lots, or you have your lot and there's a street on each side. We had some residents come in last year wanting a second driveway. And planning and zoning, they applied through a variance process of variance, it's a very high standard, can you make feasible use of your property without the driveway? Arguably, yes, you're making feasible use now. So that, but thinking about it some more, they decided that they would like that possibility to exist by conditional use permit. So, not automatic, but they would come in for a permit on the secondary frontage side, so you'd have your primary addressed frontage side, it would be the opposite side, it would have to connect directly to a garage or accessory building, it can only be twenty-four feet wide and not off a major road. That's the balance planning and zoning stock, you could only have the two driveways, no more, even if you're a triple frontage, you just get the two, and it's by conditional use, planning and zoning recommended do pass.
What do they consider a, a major?
A major arterial or community arterial street, pretty much anything but a local street.
Okay, I'll look for a motion on that. Motion second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. And number four here, first reading of ordinance seven oh six.
So seven oh six, seven oh seven, and seven oh eight are functionally the same thing, but different zoning districts. In chapter six nine one of the municipal code, it says that video ladder machines are allowed in a business by conditional use permit. So ideally, the zoning code would sync up to the municipal code, so this adds video lottery as a conditional use in central business, general business, and neighborhood business. So each of those three is spread out over those ordinances. Recommended do pass by planning and zoning.
Alright, I'll look for a motion. Motion second to approve first reading of seven oh six. All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. And we have the first, the reading of ordinance seven oh seven. Motion second to approve, first reading of seven oh seven. All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. And the first reading of seven oh eight. Motion second to approve, first reading of seven oh eight. All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. We don't have any old business, so we'll move to standing committee reports, we've got the golf course, we've got some seasonal help to, to hire on page ninety-five. I'll look for a motion or discussion. Motion a second to approve the hiring of the seasonal staff for the golf course. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. We'll move to Parks and Rec, we've got the work report on page ninety-six through ninety-seven, and we need to hire staff for the pool.
Yeah, there's one change on the lifeguards, we did hear that Christopher Joseph is no longer interested. And then the lifeguards would be contingent upon certification, so it'll be approval contingent upon certification.
Motion a second to approve hiring of the pool staff. All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we've got a request to sell, sell in the park, the, the family treats. We've done this in the past?
Correct, it's peddler's permit, we don't allow peddlers to sell after nine o'clock or on Sundays without council permission, nor can they sell in the city parks without council permission. They would like to be active for tournaments and games down in Aspen Park and McCarty Park.
Motion a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Both same sign.
I feel like we need to start having them in and give us samples before we approve this, right?
That, that has been discussed among staff.
Alright. Uh, yeah. We're gonna have to have a special session for you. Uh, tree trimming and the removal bids.
We received one, one bid from Champion Tree Service for the ash tree removal as well as the tree trimming in the Boulevard. Total cost was twenty-five thousand one hundred for the bid, we've asked the Parks Department as well as Champion to maybe expand the ash tree removal, since the bids are fairly low.
Okay, I'll look for a motion on that. Motion second to approve the tree trimming bid. All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. We've got some light poles that are gonna be surplus, do we have a buyer for them?
Yes, we do. Five, five wooden poles that were on Field B that have now been taken down and replaced with a new pole or the new lights. We would like to declare them surplus with a total value of less than five hundred dollars.
Motion a second to, to approve the declaring the light poles surplus. All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. And we've got a request to remove the developer park fees, we discussed this at our briefing meeting, seemed like it made sense. Any discussion? Motion a second to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. Public safety, we've got the police report on one oh nine to one eleven. The inspection report, we've got fifteen new family homes, single-family homes, I mean. That's more than we had of all of last year, so it's, I think it's more than we had all of last year. About, about as many, okay. Alright. And we've got the fire department report, a hundred and fifty-seven calls already. That's just amazing. I mean, I, we can't thank those people enough, they go out more than once a day, and they're volunteers. You know, when everybody else is running out of the building, they're running in. It's just pretty terrific. Okay, we move on to administration. We've got appointments that are requiring the council approval. And the first is our official depository, which will be the First National Bank in Sioux Falls, Brandon Branch, First National Bank in Sioux Falls, First Interstate Bank of Brandon, Wells Fargo of Brandon, and South Dakota Public Funds. I would like to appoint them, and so I'll look for a motion. Motion a second to approve the official depository. All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. And I would like to appoint Lisa Marso with Voice Law Firm as our city attorney. And Randy, you'll have to recuse yourself.
I need to recuse myself.
And I'll look for a motion. Motion a second to approve Lisa Marso and, and Voice Law Firm. All in favor say aye. Motion carries. And the official newspaper will be the Brandon Valley Journal. I'll look for a motion on that. Motion a second to approve the Brandon Valley Journal as our official newspaper. All in favors. I guess you do. We still got four. We're good, okay. All in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. The Park Advisory Committee appointment. Adam Rosenberg and Leah Zer, Zerbo is who we would like to appoint, they've been doing it, and they both have expressed an interest to continue. So that's who I would like to appoint, so I'll need a motion. Motion second to approve the Park Advisory Committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Planning and zoning commission. These are members for a three-year term. We've got, uh, Brian Heidbrink and, uh, Lisa Thieley. They have both expressed an interest in continuing, so I would like to appoint them. So I'll look for a motion. Motion second to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. The Brandon Revolving Loan Fund, a two-year term. I'd like to appoint Barb Fish and Colin Steen to that assignment. And I'll look for a motion on that. Motion second to approve the Brandon Revolving Loan Fund Committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Library Committee, Dave Call. I'll look, I'll look for a motion on that. Motion second to approve the Library Committee, Dave Call. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, then there's the mayoral appointments that, uh, do not require council approval. So, as far as administration is concerned, I would like to reappoint Dave Call. The golf course, Bruce Johnson. Parks, Brandy Marso. Safety, uh, Kevin Lawrence. The streets would be Barb Fish. And utilities, Steen. So, now you have it.
Well, appointing, appointing the council members to both park advisory and planning and zoning. Oh, did he? He just didn't get Barb, okay.
Okay, well, yeah, I'd like to appoint Barb then for planning and zoning. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You didn't need council approval. Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, I missed it. Alright. You're in, you're in Barb. Um, our CIP work section start, uh... Excuse me? Did I miss it?
Didn't put any names down, looking for volunteers. Last year it was Steen and Johnson. Uh, I think the next one up is shaking her head.
Yeah. Next.
If you want to.
Yeah. Alright. Does that need council approval?
No.
Okay. And then the reminder that, uh, our work sections will start for the CIP program, um, on the thirteenth?
Monday the thirteenth, and then we'll determine, uh, a future meeting after that, since we're gonna be missing some folks on the twenty-eighth.
What time?
Four o'clock.
Four P M.
Yep.
Okay, then we'll, um, look for, uh, we have an amendment to purchase, oh, to the purchase agreement of Encore Park.
Council approved the purchase agreement to purchase lot four, block two of Encore Park, as well as lot eleven, block three, Heartland Business Park Edition, uh, from Encore Park for drainage and easements. Uh, there is a correction on page, starting on page one twenty-four. The years for payable property taxes were amended.
I'll look for a motion on that. Motion to approve the amendment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. And the housing infrastructure finance program.
This is the grant agreement with, uh, South Dakota Housing for the grant that we were awarded, uh, about one point one million dollars. Working on getting them what they need for the grant and...
How's it going?
It's going.
It's going, okay.
Let's see if they'll be satisfied with everything we can get them.
Need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
Motion second to approve the housing and infrastructure finance program.
Is this, is this the one that we may not get all of it because bids came in a little lower, is that right?
Right, I don't anticipate we'll get the full one point one million with the bids coming in so low. I would say closer to a little under a million.
That's a real good problem to have.
Yeah.
I'll look for a motion.
Got it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Streets. We've got the work report on one sixty-eight. We have, uh, a new employee to hire, Alex Walker. Is that right? I'll look for a motion on that. Motion second to approve the new employee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. And then we have resolution twenty-two dash twenty-four. The, uh, bridge reinspection program.
This is a program with the D O T. Um, they pay about eighty percent of it, we pay about twenty percent of it. And we just need to have the bridge inspected every other year.
Motion second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Water and sewer, the Big Sioux Drainage Project. We've got the pipeline and drainage easement. Pages one seventy-five to one eighty-eight. I'll look for a motion. Or discussion. Motion second to approve the, uh, pipeline and drainage easement. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. And we've got...
We haven't, we haven't had a pre-construction meeting yet, we have to award the contract first, but it sounds like they're not gonna start until about August. Which might be okay in the state park.
And we've got project bids. Tammy, what is that?
Yep, so it's the same project, we had three different bidders. Um, the lowest bid would be L T Companies for six eighty-six.
Okay, any discussion? I'll look for a motion. Motion second to approve the project bids. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. And then we have the Encore Park, uh, permanent utility easement.
These utilities were put in as part of that development. Um, utilities already put in, installed, and, uh, paid for. So, this is just kind of that cleanup work, so that we can access it in the future.
Okay. Any discussion? Motion second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. The Sioux Falls Forest Main Project and the Allison Eastern License Agreement.
So this is for the, the sewer main that goes all the way to Sioux Falls from Brandon. Um, we have a casing there and a pipe there that's existing and we wanna put in that new pipeline. And so this permit actually covers all of those.
Okay. I'll look for a motion. Motion second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. And then we have a drainage easement with Allison Eastern. Pages two twenty-two and two twenty-three.
And so this is for the west side of their track, kinda by Dogwood. We have a drainage ditch that runs along there that's in need of some maintenance work. And so within our core area project, we're going to be replacing that culvert underneath Dogwood and then cleaning that up a little bit too. So, this just gives us the right to be in there and do that work.
Okay. Motion second to approve the drainage easement with Allison Eastern. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. And motion carries. Okay, we don't have any new business and we are going to do an executive session, so we call, we adjourn this meeting. Motion second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.